Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting in the Fargo School Board to order. Approval of the agenda, please. Robin?
I move approval of the agenda with the HR addendum.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Correspondence? Anyone with any correspondence to share? Okay, thank you. No one signed up from the audience, so we will move on to staff reports. Administrative leave and suspension policy. Dr. Schatz?
Thank you. This evening, we're bringing you three policies for your information and any feedback that you might have. The first one I'll take. The next two I'll introduce, Brock and Bob, for the policies that they'll talk about. The first one is AP 5223. This is a new policy. What we did was we consulted with the School Boards Association and looked at the policy they had, and what you see is almost verbatim of the policy they had. And what it really does is it delineates out the difference between an administrative leave and a suspension. There's two different approaches that you can take to this. Administrative leave would be something that I would take upon myself to do. The suspension would be a board action. And so by adding this policy, what we've done is we've just clarified what would occur. Okay. Like that said, hopefully that won't continue. Maybe we gotta ask Bill what's going on. Do we have some interference? So basically, as I was stating, what this does is it just provides us that clarity, and it's in policy, so that if, in fact, we do get in that situation, we have guidance. And so at this time, if anybody has any questions about this particular policy, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions?
Okay. Anne Marie, do we know why this is going on, or are they trying to?
There's something interfering with the microphones. They can't get it to turn off, so they're working on it right now.
Okay. Moving on to AP 3510, community use of facilities, and update. Brock was in charge of a task force that took a look at this policy. They've spent a good majority of the year with a large task force looking at this policy, so I'm gonna turn it over to Brock to provide you with some of the details of that policy. When finished with that, we'll move on with the policy that Dr. Gross led, so.
Madam President, members of the Board, as Dr. Schatz indicated, we spent the better part of the last year really reviewing Policy 3510 for really consistency of application throughout the district, and just to try to get a handle on exactly what all is allowable to be in our buildings, what do we use them for, how do we categorize, who uses the facilities, at what charge, if any, et cetera. And so we had a task force led by myself and District Activities Director Todd Olson, and a wide range of people throughout the district, including activities directors and principals at all levels, to really provide input as to what do they see coming as requests in their buildings, how have that been handled, you know, do we have a consistent application? And really, the goal is to try to get to a place where we're not having outside organizations, if they want to use our facilities. We don't wanna pit building against building. We wanna make sure that no matter which building you go to, that was one of the primary goals, no matter which building you go to, you get the same answer as far as use of gyms, use of classrooms, use of common spaces. You should get the same response at the same rate throughout the district, and really just trying to get a good handle on that. So we broke this up into different segments. We had subcommittees work on each individual segment, from general provisions to financial procedures, things of that nature. We're gonna put a pilot in place at Carlman Ielson on a more streamlined financial procedure that is really billing through our existing system, so everything can be happening online, to just really get a better handle on all of those aspects. And we feel that although fairly cumbersome, because it's a large policy, because there's certainly a lot of moving parts, we feel we have a cleaner policy with much more consistent application, as well as broader understanding. For me, one of the best values in this process was having a number of people at the table that really dug into the policy in great detail, to have a much better understanding of what it is that we're trying to do throughout the district. So I could answer any questions that you might have in that regard, but that's a general overview of what we tried to accomplish in reviewing the policy.
Rusty?
Not really a question, but just thanks for doing this. I would hear oftentimes from people thinking that someone was getting a better deal at a different facility and whatnot, but I would assume this took a lot of time, but I think for us, moving forward, consistency is key, and thanks for taking this on.
It was a fairly long read. Are there any highlights of the major changes?
Members of the Board, Robin, you know, nothing changed significantly. I think, you know, we tried to take what was in place and said, okay, if that applies to this type of organization, do we have, have we represented all like organizations? So, for example, in the section that has types of groups, there are three categories of groups. Tried to group them by very like organizations in the old policy. I believe there were four, and some of them were maybe misplaced. They were in one area, and they should be in another. So, you know, it's difficult for me to point to one thing and say, okay, that changed completely, or went away completely, or was completely overhauled. It was really adjusting which groups we had our facilities open to, organizations that do similar types of things that we have agreements with, like the Park District, or organizations like that, that are in the right category. They are charged, or they're not charged. They're charged for extra staff we have to have on time versus for the facility itself. So it was just making sure we had those things in the right place, more than to say to you, this item right here completely was eliminated, or it was increased in cost by X amount. Does that make sense?
Chris?
Just to clarify, Brock, I'm a little confused. There's groups like the Good News Club, which is the child evangelism fellowship, which meets at some of our elementary schools after school, and also the All Pro Dads, which has a religious base. What's the policy with regard to that in terms of separation of church and state issues? I've been asked that before, and I'm never really quite clear on the answer in terms of Fargo Public Schools' position there. Would it fall under a category two, based on the policy?
Members of the Board, Chris, there is a specific reference, and that was one of the inconsistency pieces. We have that, the separation of church and state piece, and then in our policy, we had the ability to, we've rented two churches before that we're building. And so did we have, okay, we do it in this case, but we don't do it in this case, and should we be doing that? And I, in these multiple pages, would, I can find a specific reference to how we address that and get that to you? I can't?
It says here, yeah, Church Organizations for Regular Services or Functions is a category three.
And so there's a difference. We saw that as different, and as you recall, some of the organizations that you reference, we specifically addressed, Dr. Schatz addressed this past year, and made sure, again, that are we being consistent, and are we, is there a conflict of interest between what our policy says and what is allowable at the buildings, and have we addressed that specifically? And so we have allowed for some of those things with churches for those types of purposes, but be very careful with an organization with a different message philosophically than we should be doing in our schools.
Thank you.
Can I just say too, Brock, to clarify, there's a difference between a church renting a gym to have their regular weekly services, as opposed to an organization with religious beliefs wanting to come on and do a program for our students. So that's part of the difference. Is that clear? That, okay. Okay, good. Thank you. Any other questions? John?
Madam President, members of the Board, Brock, I'm not sure I see this in here, but I have, I've heard of a concern in our community with new Americans. For example, the Somalians, the Sudanese, and the Bhutanese, that are rather new here, that are refugees. And one of their, as I gather, one of the biggest needs they have in their community is something as simple as access to soccer fields. Then when they do have access to a soccer field, they're charged anywhere from ninety to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, which is very prohibitive to that community and to those folks. And I would just ask if that's, if there's any leeway in our approach to these facility uses for peoples in our community that are trying to acclimate and trying to find places to fit in, and if we can ever, or some way, look at their particular needs, and maybe other groups as well, to see if we can help them have a place that they can, because soccer's everything to them. And their kids, they, when they're refugees, they have a window of time that, as you know, where life is pretty tough, and they can't, they can't fall out of line. So having their kids being active and engaged is just so key. So it's just a thought, and I've been hearing this multiple times from three different new American communities. I know we're reaching out to them, Dr. Schatz, and so on, and it's not like asking for a question now, but if we can maybe open some doors of communication and partnerships with those new Americans, I think it would be greatly appreciated.
And I think it would be prudent on our part to find out where that's happening, because not aware of that. So we'll do some checking and see if, in fact, that's occurring, and what situation is, and what we might be able to do.
And to that note, if you look on page 14, we tried to identify fields, and one of the differences there is that a lot of those fields either have a joint powers agreement between us and the Park District, or maybe are solely owned by the Park District. And so the ownership, for lack of a better word, of that space may not fall to us for decision-making as much as the Park District. And we did identify those. That's new to the policy, where we didn't have all of our outdoor fields, and we frankly, Todd can probably speak better to this, but to the best of my knowledge, get very few requests for the outdoor facilities. So that's news to me.
Anyone else to question on this policy? Okay, next.
Okay, our third policy that we bring you tonight is a new policy also. This is what we're gonna be calling our aquatics policy, AP 3512, 5512, because we have it in two different locations within our listing on the website. Again, a large task force was put together and led by Dr. Gross, and as you're well aware, after our unfortunate accident at South, we felt it necessary to do a comprehensive review of everything we're doing with our pools, from classes to other organizations to any other types of uses of our pools. And so I'm gonna have Dr. Gross kind of walk you through the process that they went through, some of the resources they reviewed, and what we feel has ended up in being a very comprehensive approach to ensuring that we have done everything possible within our means to provide a safe environment. So it's Dr. Gross's turn.
Thank you very much. Attached to memo 133, you will see the aquatics policy. This was designed by a 10-member task force. We had three assistant principals or activity coordinators from the district level, three high school physical education teachers, our director of student activities, our custodial supervisor, two community members, one from the Park Board and one from the YMCA, who deal with the aquatics programs there, and then myself. We met over the course of three different meetings to review different policies from across the country. It was difficult to find sample policies, because not many districts had policies for us to review, but we were able to find many, or a few, I should say. As a team, then, we went through the policy, in particular, looking at how are we gonna handle situations when it is our own activities during the course of the school day, and how do we want to handle that? And you'll see, there's a section in the policy that specifically talks about that, where we will have a lifeguard on deck during that type of activity, the swim units that we have in physical education, and so on. We also talked about our co-curricular activities, if it's swimming, if it's some of the other things that we do in our pool, and you'll notice that there's a section there that talks about the requirement for lifeguards during that type of activity as well. And then finally, we talked about what do we do when we either rent the pool to someone during, through the rental process, or with our partners, if that would be the Gators or some of the other organizations who use the pool. And there are sections that articulate the type and the number of lifeguards that are required during those activities as well. Then finally, we talked about what we want in our own district when it comes to the professional development for our own staff. And you'll notice there's a section in here that talks about any of our teachers or coaches who will be leading an aquatic activity will have their lifeguard certification and CPR certification. That's part of the policy. And then finally, we talked about the equipment that needs to be in the pool enclosure area for safety of anyone involved in that activity. So we feel we've put together a very comprehensive policy, one that deals with both our own activities, but also our community partners when they use the pool facility. And it's really designed to promote safety for our students and our community by requiring that appropriate staff and appropriate equipment when those aquatic activities are taking place in our pools.
Cinda?
Just a quick question, where it talks about a video camera connected to the school surveillance system. Is that something that already exists, or will be installed, or?
Have video surveillance equipment throughout the buildings. We do not have them in the pool enclosures yet, but that will be something that takes place this summer.
Chris?
Just wanted to thank you for crafting such a thorough policy, and also, I hope that since we're clearly on the cutting edge, leading the charge with this policy, that other state and other areas will take this and run with it, because it seems necessary, and it's just really terrific. Thank you.
I have a meeting with the North Dakota Study Council, which is the superintendents of the largest 16 schools in the state, and I'll be putting this on our agenda for discussion and sharing it with them. I've had a couple of superintendents eagerly awaiting us bringing this forward, so that they can use it, I think, is what you're gonna see happen. But, yeah, we feel very good that it's as comprehensive as probably any policy you're gonna find across country.
John?
Madam President, members of the Board, I'm just curious if we have somebody who is hearing impaired, or a student who is essentially hearing impaired because they don't speak English? And we have a community with, I hear, anywhere from 27 to 31 countries. Is there room to work interpreters into such situations, so that we're also aware of the highest level of communication achievable? I know it's new turf for all of us, but I'm just curious if that's ever something that could be explored, or has been explored?
To answer your question, John, it has not probably been explored before. The availability of interpreters is a major issue for us in all of our language courses that we have with students who lack the English, the ability to speak the English language. I think moving forward, training with our teachers to ascertain whether certain students should even be in the pool is something that we're gonna have to talk about. And if we can provide the types of services that would allow that to happen, then certainly we'll do everything we can. But at this time, that's something that is just a resource that, throughout the city, in all programs, in all areas, is really lacking in the resources for it. So, again, something we're gonna be looking at too, moving forward.
If I might continue, Fargo Housing Authority has 31 interpreters. Maybe we could look at some partnerships where we can attach ourselves to existing programs in particular needs. It's just a thinking out loud, Dr. Schatz, but thank you.
Chris?
I just wanted to add that Sanford is really struggling with that, too, finding an interpreter, so the pool is small. But right now, let me put a mint in my mouth, there's a program that was started by a couple by the name of Michelle and Toni McCray, and it's called Giving Plus Learning. And it's a community program where it, where folks take new American families into their home and teach them the language, and that expands our pool of interpreters, and also helps our students learning English, so that their folks at home are also learning the language, and so that they don't wind up being the interpreters between the school and their parents. It actually solves a whole host of problems that impacts education. So glad to see that Kevin Brooks of NDSU has a Bush Fellowship, and he's reviving that program. So if you know anybody who's interested, we certainly are short on interpreters.
And just one follow-up comment to that, is I've been working with Kevin, too, and talking with Kevin about what he's trying to do here in Fargo, and it fits right into the other conversation we had a few meetings ago about taking a comprehensive look at all of our services across the board with our new American students, and seeing how we can start to make an impact in a lot of these things that we need to do things probably a little bit differently and more comprehensively across the city. So, yeah, they're all great, great resources that we're trying to connect ourselves to.
Anyone else have any questions regarding this policy? Okay, thank you very much. It sounds like three very comprehensive policies that took a lot of time and effort, but moving forward, I think they're very valuable. So thank you for all the time and effort, for those who put the time and effort into developing them. Any other staff reports? Brock?
Madam President, members of the Board, just information sharing, some of you are aware of. Make sure that the rest of the Board is also aware. The Association of School Board officials, for the 10th year in a row, awarded a certificate of excellence to Fargo Public Schools for financial reporting, and so I think it's important that you're aware that we continue to strive to do the best job we can in the area of our financial reporting, and all of the financial work that we do throughout the year. And we gave that certification and notice of such recently, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. And certainly, that is a credit to the team that I have. We've got a great team in our accounting department, the director, Jackie Gap. Most of you know her well, and her team, Joy Rederath, and Patty Richards, and all of them, frankly, that work in that area. We have three CPAs on staff, and they all do an excellent job, and this is really a result of their work. And I think more often than not, I, or Jeff, or the Board get a lot of credit for things that a lot of people on our team do in this.
Thank you. Rachel? Dr. Gross?
Nothing else.
Dr. Schatz?
I'll just give you a real short construction update on things that are going on with our facilities. Over Centennial this week, they are cleaning up the backside of the school. They're able to get in now and start doing some of the landscaping that needed to happen after completing the facility last spring. They're pouring some concrete, they're getting the driveway put back in, so the playground, things like that over there, things should get cleaned up there relatively soon. So that's moving forward, and that'll complete that project. With the HVAC projects, now that school's out there moving forward very quickly, this week, three of the chillers came in. You know, that's a big event when you're doing these things. So you see the semi coming with the chiller on it, so that, you know, we're encouraged with the progress that's being made, and everything seems to be moving forward well. Over at EdClap, they have now put, got the soil to a place now where they're going to start actually putting the footings down, which is really a big deal when it's coming to do projects, is when you get the footings going in, that means things are gonna start happening, and you're gonna start seeing walls go up, and all those types of things. So, again, with all the rain we've had, I'm pretty pleased with the fact that we're really not behind at all on that project. And so they've been able to really shape that up, and we feel good about where that's at. So, and then, of course, there's just a myriad of different things going on across the district now that it's summer, as far as trying to get in and get things fixed and freshened up. And so Jim and his crew are 110% working hard, and we look forward to a lot of really good things getting done here this summer. So that's where we're at currently.
Great, thank you. Anne Marie? Okay. In that case, we are at the consent agenda. Robin?
I move approval of the consent agenda with the HR addendum.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. EL 10, Communication and Counsel to the Board. This was pretty straightforward. There's a few comments, but no recommendations, so I would appreciate a motion. Yep?
I move we accept monitoring report EL 10, as outlined in memo 134.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? In that case, all those in favor of accepting the report as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Assignment of the canvassing board. This is just for information purposes. You know that we changed a couple of years ago, is it, whatever, our policy, so that the canvassing board, i.e. the folks that just go around and check who's interested in serving as president and vice president for our next year. After tonight, you'll know how many people you need to canvass. And the canvassing board is made up of the non-officers in the Governance Committee, which means Jim, Robin, and Rick. And I'd like to give Rick his last official duty as being the chair of that committee, if no one has any objections. So it, there's no need to have a motion or anything. This is just for information. So when you gather it, if Rick would share it with Anne Marie in a timely manner, that would be excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Okay. Health insurance recommendation. John, are you gonna introduce this?
I am, Madam President. Then I will probably yield the floor to Brock Leitz. The committee sent out a survey to their members to get some feedback about alternatives that they were, had on the plate to look at. One of the good things is, is it appears that the Blue Cross expected increase wasn't going to be as significant as it was earlier projected to be. But bear in mind, last year, it was like 1.9% or so. So, long story short, if you take your piece of information here, they've proposed for our consideration and hopeful acceptance, a modified sliding scale, where there's a variance in the deductible coinsurance rates that will be carried by the employer and by the employee. If you turn your sheet around, you'll see basically that it'll become a 2179% split. It had been 8020. And the increase to the district, with this proposal, if accepted, will be 6.5%, and the increase to the employee will be 12.76%. So they're picking up almost twice as much of the increase as the district would be, but it's still, and I'll defer to you, Brock, this still isn't, we aren't out of the woods at all yet, but it gets us another year down the path as we, with our consultant, explore, drill deeper into alternatives and options, and see more where trends go with the Affordable Healthcare Act and things like that. So, again, I wasn't part of this survey, but that's as I interpret it, and I believe I'm representing it rather well. And Brock, if you could provide more detail, that'd be appreciated.
Madam President, members of the Board, actually, I also am going to defer. We do have John Nelson with us, who is the chair of the Health Insurance Committee, and we feel that it's important that you hear directly from the committee themselves and the folks that John represents. So with John Strand's introduction, we'll let John Nelson give you the particulars of how we got to where we are today.
John, could you make sure your microphone is on, please? You just have to press it so the blue light is on. Thank you.
All right. As Brock said, I'm John Nelson, Principal Ben Franklin, and Chair of the Health Insurance Committee. Actually, a member of the Health Insurance Committee since 1991.
Ooh, history.
And that's when this, when this all started, was our old plan before 1991, if you were hospitalized, you were 100, had 100% coverage, zero cost to an employee at that point. And in 91, we came to the realization that that's And in 91, we came to the realization that that's no longer affordable. Well, there are lots of things that are no longer affordable with healthcare now. We've been working real hard for the last couple of years on a committee to come up with some different plans so that we have money in the district for things other than healthcare and trying to make sure we have strong benefits so we get the best employees we can for our district. Yet, we do it in a reasonable and a cost-effective way. I think the, our committee really believes that with the help of our consultant, we will really be able to get things moving now. We have been looking at some high deductible plans and health savings accounts, changes in deductibles, changes in copays, changes in contribution levels. And this time, we did a little, a little bit of everything after we got our input from our, from our meetings and from our first survey. Our first survey came back split, number of people that wanted just a change in contribution share versus changes in deductibles. So although it looks on the form that the cost to the employees increased 12.76%, that's actually just in the contribution level. Our employees will also be paying higher deductibles, higher copays, higher copays on insurances, on our prescription drugs as well. So there are additional costs for the employees there as well. But we really think that we're going, we're going the right way. We've got some meetings set up with our consultants so that we can have a long-term plan to educate our employees on what a movement to a different plan would entail and which type of plan might be better for individual employees. So we, we've got some initial times set up with Gallagher for, for doing some of that development this summer. And really what we're looking at a long-term is trying to go to a, first of all, a dual plan. And then eventually, our, what we're thinking right now, unless things change, with Affordable Care Act and things like that, is that we would eventually go towards something like a high deductible plan with a health savings account. But we need a transition and we need an education to do that. One other thing that hadn't been mentioned yet is one of the additional transfers is when we talked about this before, we were going to have reinsurance fees and some of these other governmental fees were going to come from our reserve fund. And we really felt that, no, that is a part of our insurance, that should be a shared expense as well. So we've taken those fees and we have moved them into that major pool that's going to be split 79-21 instead of just using reserve in order to do that. If anybody has any questions, I try to answer.
Robin, and then Rick.
John, can you tell us about some of the benefits that our consultant Gallagher has brought to this process?
I think one of the biggest things is a fresh set of eyes. Like I said, I've been on this committee from, since 91. And sometimes you look at something the same way for so long, you can't see things differently. The other thing that they've been able to talk to us about is when we have had an education, a system in place to educate employees on a change in insurance, this is how we've done it with school district X, Y, and Z. They have that, that experience in order to do that. The other thing that we're going to meet with them this summer on is taking a look at all of our other benefit plans and say, are there cost-saving measures that we could look at there? One of the big ones is going away from a, possibly going away from a fully insured dental plan to funding that ourself, just like, just like we do with, with the health insurance. And can we combine some of our other plans so that we can, kind of like you do at home with your, with your home and your auto? If you combine those with the same company, sometimes there's savings there as well. And right now, the other benefit that we see of it is we have somebody who is giving us advice that isn't, isn't a player in that, in that game. Initially, Blue Cross came with a 17%. As we crunched the numbers with them and looked some more, they came back and said, you know, 10.7 is more appropriate where this is. And the reason they're at this level is because of this month back in 2011 and this month back in 2012 and the way that they're rating that. So their knowledge of working with other districts, their ability to, to look at that with a different set of eyes and to give us some advice on, here's common trends in the Upper Midwest in school districts.
Rick?
Thanks, John. See, one of the things that we've talked about here, I heard a couple of times, is we've kind of changed that split from 80-20 to 79-21. Really, that's in total, because before this was across-the-board 80-20. I mean, I'm looking at this, it's, the single coverages actually go to a lesser portion of self-pay, it's 85% the district will pick up. The employee plus dependent basically stays the same.
Stays the same.
And then the family is, is probably the most significant change, where they go to 77.5.
Correct.
So it's a different configuration, not just a change in the percentage of coverage.
Correct. And, and part of that is also because of the ACA requirements with affordability and affordability being based on a single employee. And are our, would our 30-hour pair of professionals qualify as affordable under, under the government plan? And we really, that's one reason we said, let's look at that single and is there a way that we can increase that to, to get away from possible penalties with ACA?
Rusty?
Just a point of clarification. John Strand had mentioned that the percentages that the employee will pick up, twice as much as the district. When you look at the actual numbers aligned above that, the way the contributions work, the district is still paying almost double of what the employees are paying in the increase of the premiums.
Dollar words, dollar-wise versus, versus percentage-wise. And obviously, because it's at 80-20, it's a much larger pool that way. And like I said, though, the employee that uses our insurance will also be paying in addition to that, too, through their rate, the rise in their deductible. We just felt this was kind of a nice transition to, and to give us some time to develop that long-range plan on where can we have this go? Where do we need this to go in the future? This is step one or two, depending on how you look at last year.
Thank you. Any other questions for John or Brock? John Nelson, that is, at this point. Thank you so much for coming out. Brock, do you have anything else to add? In that case, I believe they would like approval from the Board to accept their recommendations and move forward. Is there anyone? Robin?
I move that we accept the proposal of the Health Insurance Committee as noted in, in this memo.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion, questions? Well, I guess you guys did a thorough job of explaining it all. In that case, all those in favor of accepting what has been proposed, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you very much, and I wish you luck as you move forward with the continual modifications and adjustments to health insurance. First reading of the budget. Mr. Steen?
Great. Thank you, Madam President. And Brock, feel free to jump in at any time here as we're going through this. And I think there, Brock put together a fairly comprehensive summary of each of the four budgets that we're going to be looking at and hopefully approving this evening as far as on a preliminary basis. And so I don't want to cover all of that. What I will do is go through each of these and try to cover some highlights that I think are relevant and take, let's take questions after each budget if we can and we'll get through it that way. And perhaps the easiest way to do this might be to, after the discussion on each of the budgets, take a, a motion for the preliminary approval of each budget at that time, if you all wouldn't mind.
Aye.
Okay. The first budget we have is the special assessments budget. Really, no significant issues here. We have some residual revenue from, from delinquent taxes from the past. We also have the, the revenue from the Park District for the Davies Pool that is under a special assessment as well. And so really, the, the revenue side is, is at $41,000. There's no recommendation at all to implement a mill levy for the current year. That's one thing we'll be looking at in future years as we have the specials for Ed Clapp will, will be assessed to the district at some future point. Expenditures, current year expenditures, $313,000 compared to the $250,000 the year before. That is up somewhat from the prior year. The recommendation from the administration is to pay off the remaining specials for the Kennedy Elementary in the current year totaling $62,000. With that, the Special Assessments Fund would have a current-year deficit expenditures of $311,000, but still remaining ending fund balance of $734,556.
Robin? Excuse me, Robin?
You want questions or a motion? I move that we approve the preliminary budget for the Special Assessments Fund.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments regarding this? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the preliminary special assessment budget, fund budget, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the building fund. We spent a fair amount of time just trying to understand the building fund at planning, but when we were all done, it made sense to, to many of us. In the building fund, there's a lot of crossover from year to year. We've got some refunding that was, bonds were issued the previous year but paid off this year. Then we've got current-year funding of the 2014 bonds for the Ed Clapp and HVAC project. And so that's in the current-year revenue, but there's no expenditures until next year. And so there's a little bit of going back and forth here, but when we take a look at all this, probably the one thing that I asked Brock about early on is to take a look at the property tax revenue, an increase of about 9.5%. And we took a look at that and it made sure where the calculation was at least coming in, coming in right. And it looks like perhaps that the 2013-14 budget was, might have been a little bit underestimated. But the, the manner in which the 14-15 budgets calculated is consistent with the general fund calculation as well. So I felt comfortable with that. Total revenues for the proposed budget, $7,857,000, up slightly from the total fund revenues of the prior year's budget, about 8.8%. Under expenditures, budget for the expenditures would be the architectural services, the other consultant services, all related to the HVAC and the, and the Ed Clapp projects. We also have the construction services, which again is the HVAC and the Ed Clapp project as well, the $22 million. Equipment, again, related to those projects as well. And the other costs, Brock, you'll have to refresh my memory on the other miscellaneous cost piece. I'm not sure what that is for $296 as far as that budget. I don't think there's anything significant there, but I don't recall what that might be. Okay. Something related to the projects, obviously, because we, what we try to do in, in the general budget is delineate, instead of construction costs, they identify each line item by a specific type of cost in the budget, the general budget, general fund budget as well as the building fund budget. So total expenditures for the 2014-15 budget, $33,022,000, which appears to be then a deficit for the current year of $25,164,000. That again is because the projects were actually funded in 2013-14 and then expended in 2014-15. With the beginning fund balance of $32 million, the revenues and expenditures for the current year ending fund balance is estimated at $7,347,000. By the end of 6/30/15, the majority of the Ed Clapp project will be completed. There will be some runout of retainages and that type of thing to complete the Ed Clapp building project at the end of the year. So there will be some, after fiscal '15 is over, the expectations will be continued expenditures, small, but continued expenditures related to the Ed Clapp project.
Brock?
Madam President, members of the Board, I would just add a little bit to the construction costs that really make up all of what you're seeing in the expenditures or the vast majority that aren't otherwise, other bond payments. And just understand that those are the costs based on the bids that we awarded, that we know of today. As you know, that when those, that's got contingency in it, it's got fees that are on a percentage basis, et cetera. As those projects near completion, there will likely be a different final cost there, hopefully lower, as we save on contingency or some of those types of things. And we would bring you those adjustments throughout the year as we know them, because the HVAC project would finish certainly in this fiscal year and we would know any of those things as the new elementary school progresses. If we see things that are significant, we would bring that to you at the time. So I don't, I want to make sure everybody understands, the number you see today is what we know today that we awarded in bids or any cost that we think we've already got into these projects. But that number will change as we complete those projects.
Linda?
I know, I was going to ask about the line 890, the other miscellaneous costs or emerging needs, and you said you didn't have that. Just when you bring the final budget forward, I'd be curious about that. You know, what, what falls under emerging needs in terms of, I mean, I'm assuming the HVAC stuff is somewhere else?
Brock, you might want to respond to that. The line item itself is a generic title. And so if you look at miscellaneous, it's probably more.
Right, I understand that, but emerging needs, I mean, that had a, that had a different definition for us a few years ago.
Right, but Brock responded.
Members of the Board, Linda, I would say the emerging needs is a, is an antiquated term that when the system was set up was a term we were using and it's in the preloaded definitions of the budget codes. We, we will get that cleaned up. So, and then I will, I wrote and, written a note here, when we do for final approval, I'll bring a detailed list of any of those costs that we need to identify.
Similar, similar question I have with regard to 339, consultants and slash SROs. We know we're not funding SROs with the building fund.
Since we have bonded to our maximum ability in the building fund and we are looking to change the location of the kitchen, what are we calling it? It's not a warehouse anymore, it's a. Operation Center. Operational Center. Operation Center. And not only has the legislature limited use of the building authority, what is our, we, we have no intention of using the building authority to fund that. This, could I ask, what, what's in the queue for funding that?
As a board member, I'll just, if I could respond to that as well. I think, Chris, I think you're right. When, when we proposed the funding for the new bonds, we look at the current revenues that are available within the current mill levy structure and the valuation. In addition, we talked about over time, or I still believe, a $7 million fund balance in there. So if we have to dip into the building fund fund balance, that would be available as well to build the new operation center as well and perhaps additional funding, depending on costs, that type of thing through this. So Brock, if I.
Members of the Board, Chris, I think Rick's explanation is exactly right to your question of would we, you know, what's in the queue with the building authority? Well, part of that is really dependent on the Board and, and what direction you might choose to take with whatever comes forward for that or any other project for that matter. And recall, we've got a policy in place that requires us to take different action if we use the building authority to issue debt. So there's a lot of options that, that are out there. Building authority with appropriate approval, building fund with the reserve that is there as well as with approval. Building funds can be approved by the general public. You've got ending fund balances. So I think a, a long-term discussion and I believe a future long-range financial plan has been discussed as part of the retreat or other topics to talk about what next and how do we go about that, given that we have basically bonded the building fund to its capacity at this point.
Thank you.
Jim?
Well.
Bye.
If this budget was to be approved and if this is what we truly collect in property tax. tax, we are not any longer at our maximum bonding authority. In fact, I believe, just a rough ballpark, if we really end up collecting seven point two million, we'll probably have bonding capacity for about nine million, based upon that new number. So, not saying we're going to have to use bonds either, but I think we'd have that ability.
Madam President, members of the board, excellent point, Jim. A reminder, when we do talk about that, just for those of you that remember the bonding to the capacity, that was based on values at that time and the growth estimate there. And you're exactly right, Jim, which is one of the things that we were encouraged by when we did do the bonding, is we knew or hoped that valuations would continue to increase and maybe see larger growth than anticipated, which gives us time whenever that day comes, whether it's with this operation center, or as you recall in your long-range facility plan, the next elementary school down the road. There may be room here that didn't exist when we issued the bonds, so that's great news for us, and Jim's exactly right.
Robin?
Clarification on that, Jim or Brock? An additional nine or up to nine?
I'm just ball parking. If we actually see what will be pretty close to six hundred thousand of additional property tax brought in on an annual basis, I think that would probably equate pretty close to nine million of additional bonding capacity without impacting our ratings.
Brock?
And I realize we're speculating and playing a little bit of what if, but recall that if the legislature also provides funding for the state school construction, and we refinance some of the existing debt at a lower rate of interest, that helps that issue that Jim's referencing even greater, because our payments will be lower, so the obligations for this fund will be less. So I think there's reason to be optimistic that we've got some things in the future that have been structured pretty well for us as we go forward.
Rick?
So I'm just waiting for a motion.
Robin?
I'll second yours. Were you making one?
I'll wait for someone else to make.
Jim?
I move we accept the building fund as presented for our preliminary approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, oh, I beg your pardon, John, I didn't see.
Madam President, without too far jumping ahead, but if somebody could explain why the substantial difference in the projected increase in the revenue for the building fund, asking of revenues from property taxes, without diving into the general fund, why is that so much less?
John, I did address that right up front on the revenues. When we looked at the calculation for the fourteen, fifteen.
Bless you.
Revenue within the building fund.
Bless you.
It's calculated very consistently. The thirteen, fourteen estimated revenue was underestimated in the budget.
So it was overly projected for the thirteen, fourteen?
Thirteen, fourteen was underestimated.
General.
No, no, in the building fund.
Okay.
And so that's why the increased budget to budget in the building fund, John, looks so much greater than it does in the general fund.
Perhaps when we get to the general fund, then I'll get a little better explanation over on that side, Rick.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting the building fund preliminary budget, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. Rick?
Nutrition Services Fund is the next budget we're going to take a look at. Not a lot of significant items here, other than it's been already described by Brock's memo. The one area that we talked a little bit about in planning was what's going on with à la carte revenues. And the answer that we got was the à la carte menu is not as attractive as it once used to be to the students, and they're just buying less food on the à la carte piece. Healthier food available, I think is resulting in less purchases, I think is what Debette told us she thought would happen, and it appears that that did happen. So when we take a look at the revenues, with regard to food service revenues, a slight decrease from thirteen, fourteen to fourteen, fifteen as well. Other revenues, really no significant changes in the other revenue section, so when we look at the total fund revenues, a slight decrease of eighty-two thousand, or a little over one percent decrease in nutrition services revenue. On the expense side, really no significant changes until you get to page two, line thirty-three, seven thirty-three, and in that is the equipment budget. And we had some discussion here during planning, there's also an additional number with regard to funding the necessary equipment upgrades to the new operation center, if that were to occur prior to the end of the year, and without a detail. And so Brock went back and actually reduced the equipment expenditure line to what we know to be the required expenditures, and this does include the Ed Clapp expenditures to the tune of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to basically build out that kitchen at the Ed Clapp Elementary. Final extra, the excess revenues over expenses and for the year, six hundred and twenty thousand deficit, still leaves an ending fund balance with the Nutrition Services Fund of one point one million at the end of fifteen.
Brock?
Madam President, members of the board, just to elaborate a little bit on the equipment side, one of the things that was discussed at planning in detail, and if you recall from the update I gave you last board meeting about the operation center, the integral piece to that is the central kitchen, and having it up and functional and operational in a time to be ready for the fall of fifteen school year, if in fact that's the timeline we stay on in negotiations with the city. If that timeline happens, and we need to be pre-purchasing in preparation for that move, we had discussed at planning that we would treat that as a budget adjustment, much like we would do in any budget, and we would come to you at that time and say, okay, we're now moving forward with these purchases, here's what that's going to cost. We do have the ending fund balance in preparation for accomplishing that, and just address it as a budget adjustment, rather than put in a blanket amount and not know if it's going to happen this year. So that's what will happen potentially as we move throughout this next fiscal year.
Robin?
Now that the foundation is able to fund milk programs again for the elementary students, are we fairly confident that all the kids are getting their milk breaks in the elementary grades?
Members of the board, Robin, yes, to the degree that they are being requested, and we're really doing that in conjunction with the foundation through our Nutrition Services budget, as well as what the foundation is raising. And there is a discussion that happened a year ago, when we met with some of the elementary principals, that there's a desire to expand that to a, truly a snack break, and really to be all-inclusive to all children, as opposed to just those that qualify for free and reduced lunch. So there may be growth in that program, and so we're feeling like, right now, for those that qualify, they are, their needs are being met, and if we expand that, we think there's an opportunity to even reach more.
And the reason I say that is not to stir the pot, but I know that milk prices are going up for families at home considerably, and I want to make sure they're getting their milk during the days. Thank you.
Rick, anything else to add before a motion? We're taking turns.
I move approval of the preliminary Nutrition Services Budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. Rick, general fund?
Last one. And I'm confident we can get through this in short order. I believe that to be the case. I think first off, John, to address your question, because it's the very first line on this budget, I'm going to ask Brock to specifically identify how the property tax revenues were calculated.
Members of the board, Rick, in response to that, we're taking actual mill levy, a hundred and thirty-nine mils, times the actual rate provided to us per mill by the county. And then this, in this current budget, I don't have this number off the top of my head, it's two hundred and seventy-three thousand and change. And then we take that times a ninety-five percent collection rate, because our historical average is about ninety-five percent collection in year one. So for this year, thirteen, fourteen, the number is two hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. So one thirty-nine times that number, times ninety-five percent, gives us our budgeted amount. What we've done then is based on projections that we've gotten from the city and conversations we had with planning, we took next year's number, so we took two hundred and seventy-three, eight ninety-five, times a five point five percent increase in valuations, times a hundred and thirty-nine mils, times ninety-five percent collection for the actual year, to come up with our estimate of the thirty-eight million, one fifty-seven. So we're, we're taking the number provided from last year from the county, growing it by the valuation projection given to us by the city, times our number of mils levied, times our historical collection rate for current year. Makes sense? One plus one plus one is three. There's a song, right?
Linda, and then Robin?
So five percent, five point five percent valuation increase is higher than we've seen in. Any sense that that's a bubble or a trend, or what are they?
Members of the board, Linda, you are correct, it is significantly higher than we've seen, but certainly, I think, as many property tax owners would attest, as revaluations have happened, we've seen some movement in the market in that regard. And so I think what's happening is through the regular cycle of doing those revaluations, we're starting to see the market move pretty significantly more than it has in the past. If we look at historically, what we've gotten in an annual report from the city versus what the number's been, it's been within like point two percent. And so, you know, they're saying in that, you know, maybe closer to six percent, in the five and a half to six percent range, we feel like if we stay within that same margin of error that their history has been, that that's a pretty accurate number. That report would indicate over a seven percent growth rate for the city of Fargo, so the five and a half is for FPS, District One. And so I guess we're feeling very confident about that number. My pause is because we've seen over the last, well, since I've been here, one point eight to two point two, that number's been pretty small in the four years I've been here. So to see valuation increases like this is encouraging news, and until you actually see it for a while, then you breathe a little easier, but it gives you a little pause on the front end.
Robin, and then Chris?
That was my question. Thank you.
Okay. Chris?
My question is, you know, there was a time when we understood that the legislative action indicated that we would have frozen values, frozen revenue at twenty sixteen, but my understanding was that new construction wasn't in that, that we could continue to, to.
Go ahead.
Well, I debated someone about this recently, and we kind of butted heads, but, so my understanding is that new construction, the valuations continue to go up, so we can continue to sort of collect revenue for that.
Members of the board, Chris, I looked at Jim, because he and I have gone round and round to try to figure out exactly how this works. Do you want to try to explain this, or would you like me to?
Thank you. Whatever we collect the final year is a dollar amount that is frozen until that dollar amount equals whatever the then-state authorized mill authority would be. So let's just say all of us pay a thousand dollars on our house right now, and Brock loses his election in Castleton and moves to town and builds a house. His house will be valued, and let's just say Brock is going to have to pay nine hundred dollars a year in property tax. Our property tax will proportionately go down, so the total dollars we get as a district will be the same number we got the year before. Brock will be paying property tax because he has a new home that he constructed. Those that have existing property will pay slightly lower property tax because that property came online. So this theory that some people, maybe even that came back from Bismarck and shared that you'd still get increased revenue off new property, new development, is clearly not the case. The new property will pay, and that will be in turn savings to the existing property owners of the district. So frozen is exactly what it sounds like, frozen at a hard dollar number.
Brock?
Members of the board, thanks, Jim. I'm going to get some modeling from Mike Mon pleasure. He and I have talked over the course of the week, following the last planning meeting, and as we move toward final approval, hopefully the modeling he will provide to me, we will talk that through in planning, and Jim is exactly right, and you get the new property, but in essence, the value of your old property goes down as the new property comes online, so it kind of washes each other out to move you closer to that valuation. And so he's going to give me something that hopefully will do a step-by-step walkthrough of exactly what Jim explained, so if we see it on paper, maybe we can explain that or get people to understand it in a step-by-step manner.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, then we have the line eleven eighteen still on revenue, and we had a lot of discussion about this previously, that's the SNL tax. Last year's budget was a million, two seventy-six, actual, in the general fund was a million, six fifty-two, and I know we've all discussed the fact that this has been reconfigured for the state, and the district will no longer be receiving the SNL tax as part of its revenue base. And so in the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen budget, we actually received a million, six fifty-two in the general fund, but there's also another two hundred and twenty-seven thousand we actually received in the building fund as well, if you recall seeing that. So district-wide, a reduction of about one point nine million are related to the reconfiguration of the SNL tax. So that is a decrease in our property tax revenue, and so our overall property tax revenue is projected to increase about one point two percent for the next budget year, budget to budget. Some other small items, tuition is always a best estimate as far as tuition revenue, and that's an increase to, or projected increase, two hundred and five thousand. Local revenue down on line nineteen sixty-two, the idea there is probably in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, building one house and a number of garages versus two houses. And so that's a slight reduction there in revenue. State revenue, thirty-one ten, that's based upon a formula calculation, about a four percent increase there, almost four million dollars increase in state revenue. Total general fund revenues then, one hundred and thirty-eight million, seven fifty-five, or an increase over last year's budget of about three point five percent. Moving on to the expense piece, page two of four, total salary expense, projected increase two point three million from a prior year's budget, or about a three percent increase. Employee benefits, we had a lot of discussion, and probably one of the more significant items, health insurance, that's projected to increase almost eight percent over last year's budget. The other items, which we've also had a fair amount of discussion regarding, would be the teachers' retirement and the public employees' retirement, funding each of those going up approximately nineteen percent. So total employee benefits increasing about ten point three percent. In total, when we take a look at salaries and benefits, increase there from budget fourteen to budget fifteen, almost five million dollars, four million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, or about a four point eight percent increase in salaries and benefits. The remaining line items or categories for expenses, you can see purchase professional technical services projected to decrease six percent, operating and repair expenses remain relatively flat, just to point out there, contract and maintenance, so at the three million dollar budget to level, which we had talked about since, I think, the long-range facilities plan, so that has remained intact with the current year budget. Moving on to page three, next item there is transportation costs, increase there of about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. That's kind of across-the-board cost due to our contract, fuel, repair and maintenance, that type of thing, about four percent increase in transportation and travel. Supplies, administration worked long and hard with all of the buildings and the principals, that type of thing, to look at where we could maybe reduce some costs, and there's a lot of different areas throughout this budget, but it really does show up in the supplies and materials area, about a four percent decrease there. Equipment, a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar decrease in budget there as well, six Equipment, a hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-dollar decrease in budget there as well, six percent. And so other than truly salaries and benefits, which we don't have a lot of control over other than, you know, staffing numbers, most of the areas I think were pretty well vetted out, looked at, where can we save costs, reduce, at least, at least reduce costs or at least a minimum maintain costs at the lowest, lowest possible increase. And so you take a look at the total operating expenses for the current year fourteen-fifteen budget, an increase of four million-six-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand or about three-point-five percent. Again, of that four million-six-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand increase, four million-nine-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand of that is salaries and benefits. So again, actually three-hundred-thousand more than the total increase in expenses. So that results in basically a balanced budget for fiscal fourteen-fifteen.
Not basically. It's balanced. Specifically results in...
Robin?
More of a comment. When I crunch the numbers just on the increased, the legislative requirement of increased TFFR and losing the savings and loan task, tax, it's approximately fourteen mils to our district.
I would like to say that the planning committee to date has spent a lot of time with Brock and I know his group and Dr. Schatz's group have spent a, a lot of time working on the general fund budget, looking at all areas. They, they did get the principals involved at the building level, a lot of different people involved at the, at the local level here, at the, at the main site level. And the planning committee members, I think, offered quite a bit of suggestive thought anyway to the process and resulted in a, a budget, I think if we all recall, I think we started out with about a five-million-dollar deficit, at least preliminarily, and ended up with a combination of additional revenues, local revenues and, and some belt tightening, ended up with a, with a balanced budget, with a total increase in expenses of only three-point-five percent, which is pretty significant considering what the district was mandated to do with regard to our, our contract with our, with our teachers and also the, the benefit, the TFFR and the, and the other retirement funds that we have. So significant movement from the start to finish so far.
Thank you very much. Additional questions or motion? Jim?
I move we accept the preliminary general fund budget as provided in this particular document.
Moved in second. Any additional discussion, questions? Chris?
Yes, I appreciate the narrative form at the beginning of the document. That's a little easier for me to first read through. I also just wanted to highlight that we, we found efficiencies in the budget. There are some tweaks that we, that the administration believes aren't impacting the education that we've been providing for our students. And I clarified at planning, I just wanted to let everyone else know that my concern was that we were sort of robbing Peter to pay Paul. We wanted to balance the budget, we were going to find efficiency somewhere and later they were just going to pop up somewhere else again. And, you know, it was kind of kicking the can down the road, but I think the administration did a really exceptional job of finding ways to, you know, balance this budget in light of the TFFR issue and the SNL and, you know, I, so I feel confident that we're not taking something away that we're going to need to find money for later. So that's all, I just wanted to add that. That was just a great, great job.
Thank you. Paul?
I understand where Chris is coming from and, and having seen these budgets come and go over the years, I have a slightly different take on it and that is that I think the budget that we had last year was, was lean and not filled with excesses. And this year, when we're forced to, to cut things and not be able to add, it isn't because we had surpluses in previous years. And in fact, I think it's going to become more difficult as we go forward to maintain the quality of education that we have come to expect in the city of Fargo with an ever-limited group of resources. I think we all know that. I just like to say it from time to time because I don't want to congratulate ourselves that we've been able to cut fat out of the budget because I don't think there was fat in that budget. I think the things that the administration has proposed over the years have been things that we need and we're probably going to have to make do without some of them going forward in staffing as well as other types of resources.
Chris?
I must have misspoke because I think what you're saying is not in contrast to what I said. I think what I said was that the administration assured planning anyway, that the things that went away weren't things that were excesses, they were things that they found a new way of doing something and that it won't impact the educational integrity of what we have and what we're providing and offering. So I'm not sure what you said is in contrast to what I said.
Any other discussion? Matt Kaye? Oh, I beg your pardon. John?
Madam President, I'm, I'm going to add another element to that discussion and our constituents are of this mindset from Bismarck and legislature that they're going to be seeing property tax reductions. And, and they're expecting that and, and there has been a, a reduction in property taxes, but, but, but the reality of five-plus percent valuation increases going to counter that notion they have also, that they're going to see reductions when there's valuation increases. And I'll, and I'll, and I'll finish this by saying Fargo, to my knowledge, is at sixty-nine percent state funding. We used to be above seventy. So we're not done getting there yet so that real property tax reductions can in fact trickle down to, to the property owners in our district.
Anyone else? All those in favor of accepting the preliminary general fund budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you very much. Thank you all involved. Thank you, Rick, for a really good explanation and procedure going through that. We'll remember this next year or some people will definitely remember it next year when you're not here. We have one more business item, but again, I think it'll take a little while, so I'm going to give us all a break. I can't see with the shadow there, but ten-two, let's come back at seven o'clock, please. Thank you.
I'll this meeting back to order. We're now at the boundary adjustment discussion again. Dr. Gross?
Thank you very much. At your table, I believe, is memo 138. And attached to that memo is a data packet of the information that I will be sharing with you tonight. Like the last time we were together, I have a PowerPoint presentation that will go along with the data packet to highlight some of the different portions of that. But before I do that, one question arose the last time we were together about the idea of heat maps. So as a board, you could see where there were concentrations of students across our system at the elementary, middle school, and high school level. And before I go any further, I'm just going to quickly shift to a different piece of software. And Dr. Schatz is going to share some of that information with you as a board.
Okay, so I'm going to stand up to do this. And this is like back with the long-range facility planning process. We're going to do heat map now. So, John, I think you had asked for this, so we're going to provide you the best we can with kind of an update. And so I thought it would be easier if I could just kind of point. The new software that we're using is a little bit different than what you saw before. The, you know, the other software that we had with our consultant, they were able to make those color kind of changes with big round yellow spots or red spots. So what we can do is we can go by grade level, and then we can kind of show you within the attendance areas, where is the population? You know, where do they reside? And I think there's some, so Bob, this map here, tell me again what we have as far as what this represents right now.
On the screen is the current elementary boundaries in the different colors, and then the students who are K through five this current school year.
So we're going to start with that. And so I think the one thing that I wanted to point out that is pretty significant is that when we were looking at heat maps almost a year and a half ago now, at least a year, we weren't seeing some of this right here. This is the beginning of that growth out around Davies. And so now we're starting to see that actually materialize. So all these, we saw a few dots out here, but this now, if this was a heat map, this you'd start to see, if it was like one of those heat maps, you'd start to see that transition from yellow to red in some of these areas. This is the housing that has been put just north of Davies now, because out here would be Davies. And this is that new development that's going in, so you can see they have new streets in. If you, I drove out there today to attend the tech camp, and you can just see the explosion of growth with the streets that are in now, so you're going to see the houses coming in. And then also, this parcel of land that sits south of 76th, I believe now is going on the market for developers. So we're seeing that materialize. It's starting to happen in a big way. All of this here has been plotted. They are going to connect the road this year from 70th Avenue, which has been north of Davies, to University, so now we'll finally have that two-side ability to get into the school. So I think this is important for you to see, because now you can actually see it happening. So as we move up, just, oh yes, good point. This is at, I believe it was the Christiansen addition, and this was a little bit controversial with the city at the time. They've now settled that, and you see a major infrastructure development going on there, too. So we're going to see a pretty rapid expansion in here. Over here at Kennedy, you're also seeing it right here off of 52nd. You're starting to see pretty rapid expansion here with infrastructure, too. So you are going to start seeing houses move rather quickly. So as we start to push to the north, you can see the high numbers of students that are in that elementary age group right here in this part of the, right off for Centennial. And as we look to our new, to our configuration here right now, Bennett, as you see the red, you start traveling up 25th Street, you can just see the clusters of students. You get up to here on 32nd, I believe it's this 32nd, yeah. 32nd, then you see this area in here where a lot of businesses, as you travel on 32nd. You get right over to here off of 25th. You have the apartment building here that's right across from Sunmart. And then, of course, as you get into the whole Blumont region, you can see the distribution. Look at the high concentration of kids here. Lots of apartment buildings that come down here behind Kmart and those areas, but look, you know, look at those numbers. It's just a lot, a lot of students that reside in those areas. So when you ask, why is Lincoln so full? Well, here it is. This is the numbers that go to Lincoln. Lewis and Clark, as we continue to move north, look at the high numbers of concentration here, up in here, and then way over here. Now, this is Prairie Wood, right here. But again, just very high concentration numbers in certain areas where you see, and again, the explosion of, well, not the explosion, but the steady increase at Lewis and Clark, filling up Lewis and Clark. And then as we go across University, and we get over into the Clare Barton neighborhood, you can see again the numbers and where people are living. Over here in the Jefferson area, very high concentrations in here. These are apartment buildings right here. A lot of multi-home type facilities here. So you can see around Jefferson, the primary heavy load is here. As we talked about, this little piece from CBEH, and how many students are involved in that particular area, right where CBE is? So, you know, it makes quite a difference if you move a couple blocks one way or a couple blocks the next way. So as Bob and I looked at these, and you start talking about, well, can you draw a line here, and how many students does that mean? That's what we were doing. We were looking at the high concentrations, but sometimes you just go two blocks, all of a sudden you have a significant number of kids. So, Rick?
Dr. Schatz, what is that northwest section of Jefferson? Mayors now and old?
Right here?
Yes.
That, as you start to get out towards the interstate, becomes commercial.
It's all commercial.
All that commercial, open land. Over in here, yeah, as you go along the Main Avenue, you know, that's where Radco is and all those, and then there's that service road that comes up and around. Okay? And again, when we did the long-range facility planning, you remember, we talked about that kind of dead zone in here, because that's all Main Avenue where all the businesses lie on either side? So, but look at Madison. When you look at Madison, look at how just very focused that enrollment in the attendance area is as far as the housing and where the kids live. And then it breaks out a little bit this way. We get over to Roosevelt Horseman area. Again, lots of students located right within those neighborhoods. As you get to the outliers here, not so heavily populated. Continue to move, as we move forward, we've got Washington, again, very heavily populated with elementary students. Look at Longfellow. And then over here at McKinley, a lot of apartment buildings right here, a few folks up here. And then, of course, we have that far northern region where we bring them to Washington, and that right here, for those of you who know the north side pretty well, is that one area that has been developed. So now this was elementary. So, Linda?
What's her name?
See, that would be, I've got to get my bearings. I believe that is right out over here. Yeah, right in this area, next to the golf course. So that's the new development there. So let's quickly go over to, do we want to do middle school next? Is that what we're doing? Oh, Robin?
You know, with as densely populated as those south schools are, that's very, that's reminiscent of my programs in there, too. And we're turning kids away, because we have to have so many square feet per child, and not all the children are getting served in those schools through after-school care. So it doesn't just affect, just affect the in-school time, but also the out-of-school services for these families.
Yep. And then as we saw in the past, if we broke it out, elementary to middle school to high school, you're going to see similar patterns, but I always think it's interesting to just see, is there any differentiation in the, in the patterns? And so now we get the middle school students again, you know, in that Madison neighborhood. Now we have a lot of kids there that are also middle school kids, and now the longer distances to get to school, of course. And you can see how busing patterns start to develop, too, when you start to look at something like this with the larger schools. Let's go to Carl Ben, get a sense, kind of move it up, Bob, a little bit more. Okay, so you get this real sense of where the kids are. Similar patterns, again, over here in the Blumont area, pretty high concentrations here, lots of apartment buildings right in here, pretty high concentrations there. Out here in the Kennedy area, see what's happening. And here's what's going to start happening. Well, let's keep moving it up. Bob, look at how tight it's getting to 52nd. But now, as we cross over and we get to the other side of Walmart, and all this is being developed, we're going to start to see a similar pattern of what happened over here. And you'll start to see the dots go in there once the houses start getting built. And again, how far south we're going, we're way past now what would be Davies, right in here. You can even see some of the growth that's going out here. This would be all Discovery. And you get way out here, which is 100th Avenue, right here. This is 100. And so, and to answer your question, Chris, that you've asked a couple times about future land for elementary, right now, here's Davies, 64th, 76th. We're looking somewhere in here. And I'll have a report this summer on that. But just so you know, that I've been working with people on where might we be part of the development rather than the development driver. So, okay, then, real quick, high school, we'll just give you a sense to see if there's any other pattern changes here. Okay, here we go. Is that it, Bob? Yeah, it's got to upload. The beauty of this software is that if a new student moves in tomorrow, the next day they're on this map. So this is very interactive, it's up to date, it really gives us real time, and we can cut lines anywhere we want, pull up the data over here, and it tells us exactly what the makeup is, those types of things, so we can know very quickly all the different statistics that we need to know on data. Rick?
What database are you actually pulling all of that from?
Bob?
We're pulling it from our student information system, or Power School.
So when a student's registered right away, then this updates itself?
It's our own database, and it's not the city's.
This is all ours. This is what we know as of today. Linda?
Just a quick kind of operational question. When we hired the demographer during our planning process, and they had their software, did we get this after that so that we could, from now on, do this ourselves?
We just did this, this year, so that we could do the boundary line work without having to go to them, because then there's always a delay. Okay, we're still going to probably engage with that group to do updated, because they pull information from a lot of different areas. This right now just pulls from our system. Okay, trend data, census data, county birth data, all that kind of stuff. They pull all that in here. This is-
So this, this is a snapshot of today, but what they do is forecasting?
They forecast down the road. So that's the difference. This is what we currently have and know. And then when you think of, you know, remember the maps I sent you a week or two ago about the updated planning maps, and you show where things are plotted? The interesting thing for me now is you can actually see the numbers starting to pop in there. So you just lay that one map over this, and you can start to see where it's going to be. But again, similar patterns like you've seen before. Go all the way up to north once, let's look at that.
Dr. Schatz?
Yes, sir.
This is, this is the, this is the reflection of the students as relative to their residences. It isn't like petition students, or bus students, or students moved in and out. This is-
Is your mic on, John?
It is.
I'll have, I'll have Bob kind of address that.
The data that's in front of you right now, the first thing we did is we sent any petition student back to their home attendance area in the software tool. So that way, we could then build all of the scenarios that we wanted to present to you with a clean slide.
Off of the real where they live statistic. Otherwise, it'd just be too hard to do, to get it accurate enough. So, so again, you can see high school population up on the north side, again, kind of reflects even more so here than you saw in the elementaries. Even out here, you get some outliers that really go out, because now north serves all of these areas, because we don't break it into smaller areas. So we just thought it would be a good review as we get into the new couple different maps that Bob has for tonight, for you to see that, so you can kind of think about that as you're looking at what might be our final plan eventually here as we move forward. So I'm going to turn back to Bob, and he's going to go through the different changes that we've made that were asked for at the last meeting, and then we're more than happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. At the last meeting, we were asked to focus most of our time and effort on the secondary level. So what I'd like to do is start with middle school scenarios. We have two to share with you tonight. In your data packet on page one, just to give you a reference, is the current middle school boundary. Each time I present, I want to share with you the current information. And then on page two is the current demographic information. And again, this is as if all petition students went back to their home attendance area. And then we use that for the foundation for any of the scenarios that we built.
Quick question. We've talked about all the petition students. Do we actually have any idea what number that is? Curious. Okay.
I asked that question today. For the 1314 school year, we had just a little over 200 students at the elementary level who put in petitions. We had about 50 middle school and 50 high school age students.
Does that mean they were granted their petitions, or just those that applied?
These were the ones that were granted.
Okay. Linda?
Why, uh, why so many more at the elementary level, and what are usually the reasons for petitioning?
I think sometimes the issue is after-school childcare, and it may be that the facility that is providing that for the family, or the home daycare is in a particular area, and they then provide transportation to and from school. That's many times what we hear is the reason. The other is where parents are on a transportation route on their way to work, and it makes it much easier for the parent to drop off and pick up their student at an elementary school. Once they get to the middle school and high school, many times the student is older, parents feel more comfortable that they can take the bus and get to and from school on their own.
So it's almost always a matter of transportation, or how it works out for the family? It's not necessarily choosing one school itself over another?
The majority is for transportation issues. Sometimes there are parents who would prefer a particular school, either a history that they would have at a school, or other reasons, but the majority that we see are childcare, transportation, those types of issues.
Robin?
Clarification, the reasons that are listed on the petition.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Go on.
So, the last time we were together, we shared with you a middle school scenario, and through that conversation, the question came up, could we just change that slightly, and what would that do to the information? This was the scenario that we shared with you the last time. It was 2B, in which the students from Clare Barton-Hawthorne, that entire neighborhood, was assigned to Ben Franklin. In the bottom right, you'll see that this is in your second data packet on page 21, if you wanted to go back to that one. And the question was, what if we took this area and assigned it to Carl Ben Ielson instead? And then in the southern part of that boundary, this area was assigned to Discovery Middle School instead? This is what those boundaries would look like, and we're calling that one 2C. And here is the data that we would receive by running that scenario. You'll see that we get three somewhat equally sized middle schools, a variance of about 63 students from the largest to the smallest. And then I also provided for you all the other pieces of information that we've looked at when it comes to the different scenarios, so you can see free and reduced special ed percentage and ELL percentage.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris. I'm not used to sitting with my back to you guys, sorry.
Can we just interrupt you if we have a question?
Yeah, if I don't, yeah, sorry. It's awkward to have my back to you. Chris?
Could we go back to the slide before?
The map?
The map, I'm sorry, the map. The one where that, yes, this one. Would it make sense for that-
Could we go back to the slide before?
The map?
The map. I'm sorry, the map. The one where that, yes, this one. Would it make sense for that group of kids that currently goes to CBH to go back to Jefferson so that they can, with their Jefferson Elementary, and then stay with the Carl Ben Ielson and South High School?
The number of students who live in that area would be too large and would put Jefferson over its capacity.
Okay. My second question is, can you go one step down in this? Yeah. So, if this is the way it goes, and that bunch goes down south, is that all of Ed Clap Park School then going? Or does Ed Clap Park get split too?
Under the second elementary proposal that we shared, you would have a split at Ed Clap School. Some would go to Carl Ben Ielson, some would go to Discovery under this scenario.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Rick, did you have a question too, or you were just, okay. I apologize. I'll try to do a better job of turning around. Go ahead, Bob.
So that was that information. Then, after we looked at that, we said, the southern boundary of that, what if we applied some of those practices to the very first scenario that we shared with you back at our first meeting, which was two meetings previous? And we looked at this middle school scenario, which we called middle school number one, and said, if this was the northern boundary of 25th Street to 5th Avenue to University to 13th, on the north boundary, and originally, we presented to you 32nd Avenue to 18th Street to 35th Avenue. We said, instead of that, on the southern boundary, what if this area was assigned to Discovery, and this area was assigned to Carl Ben Ielson? That slight change, what would that do to that demographic information? Well, what it would do first is, the new boundary from Discovery to Carl Ben Ielson would be 30th Avenue to 25th Street to 35th Avenue. You'd see this type of map. And here would be the data that you would see. We would create three similar-sized middle schools, a difference of about 72 students from the largest to the smallest. And then, you would see the other demographic information that we've shared in the past. The difference between this version of that first proposal and the very first proposal, what you'll see is Ben Franklin stays the same, because we didn't change that northern boundary. But the southern boundary changes slightly in the number of students. But if you look at one of the factors that we've been talking about, the percentage of students on free and reduced lunch, you'll see that 1C gets us closer to the average in the other buildings than even that first scenario that we shared with you. And then, you'll see the rest of the data that is presented there. Then, just so you had it, like I did last time, on page seven, I presented for you a side-by-side comparison between current enrollment, what that new proposal 1C would look like, and 2C would look like. The first set of data on that page, on page seven, again, is the percentage of free and reduced lunch. The second and third set of data is around the number and percentage of students in special education and receiving English language learning services. So that you had that information for your discussion this evening. Then, we wanted to run the same two scenarios for you at the high school level. So, again, I presented for you the current map, so you had something to refer back to. That's on page nine. And the data is found on page 10, all students going back to their home school in this scenario. And then, on page, the next page in, we modified that second option with this section being assigned to Fargo South, and this area being assigned to Davies, which gave you this map, and that's on page 11. And then, the information that follows on page 12, what you'll see is that plan creates three similar-sized high schools, a difference of 59 students from the largest to the smallest, and the rest of the data that goes along with that from free and reduced special education and ELL. And so that you had something to compare 1C from the middle school to the high school around. We took, again, that first proposal that we presented to you on the high school, assigned this area to Davies High School, this area to Fargo South High School. And this is, creates this type of map, which is found on page 13 of your packet. And you see this type of data, where there's a difference of about 34 students now between our smallest and largest high school. And you see then, the corresponding additional data around the demographics. And then, finally, on page 15, a side-by-side comparison of what that proposal 1C and 2C would do to those scenarios.
Dana?
Yes, I apologize.
That's okay. I just raised my hand, so you didn't miss me.
I just-
Just a quick question. And we look at that probably for middle school and high school. And we start out, say with your, the 1C proposal, very consistently sized high schools. And I think we all would believe that the growth is going to occur in South Fargo. And so, would the plan be then to, as, because South, at least I believe, has more capacity than any of the other schools? Would the, would the plan be as the population continues to expand to the south at the border for, for the Fargo South High School, would continue to move south as well, to, to continue to provide space, adequate space at Davies? And so, that would be, I mean, somewhere along the line, I think, if that, if that's what we're looking at, probably have to state that. I mean, so we're not, again, thinking, okay, here's our boundaries, this is what they are. But they're fluid, and they're going to have to be adjusted as growth goes on. It's very likely that that boundary for south is going to continue to move south. That'd be my guess, but I'm not, not making this up.
Well, the reality is this, you can only move the north boundary area so far south. And so, that's what we got to decide currently. There is no question that if Fargo continues to grow all the way down to 100th Avenue someday, that you are going to have another significant issue between South and Davies with regard to how do you load those students in to those schools? And Davies will be at capacity at around that 1350 number. So, it's a matter of how fast your growth goes. Boundary line changes in a growing community are going to be things you're going to address for a long time, until that stabilizes and stops. But I think what you're seeing with this plan is that, as you move to the north, these are some of the final adjustments you're ever going to have to do, because you're just not going to be able to make any more adjustments. And then, so you're going to see the adjustments, from my perspective, more from 32nd Avenue on down, and then back towards south if needed somehow. So you've got about three or four elementary schools involved with that, and you've got two middle schools and two high schools. But really, the northern edge of this is eventually going to be where you can't do anything more. So I hope that, I don't know if that answered your question.
Go ahead.
It did, Dr. Schatz. And what I really want to do is make sure that, that goes on record somewhere in the minutes, or somewhere along the line, that these are fluid, especially for the high school and the middle school, because of the, what's happening in South Fargo without building a new school, it's just going to continue to push those boundaries further south. Let's just want to make, get that on record.
Anybody else before I ask a question?
Bob, could you go back to the map of 1C and just clarify what the streets are, where the, this is, it's 32nd up here, but it's 35th?
Correct.
Okay, so, that's, this, is this 35th?
That is 35th Avenue, 25th Street-
Okay.
And 32nd Avenue. Thank you.
Currently, all of this, or at least this part, goes to Davies, right? Or this part? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Go ahead. It's hard to keep all of this from one to the, can't we just have it all spread across the? Linda? Well, I think what I'm hearing is when you say, how far, how far south can we push that North High attendance border? Because if you just look at the numbers, I really like the looks on the spreadsheet of 2C, because it sends as many kids possible to north while leaving room for future growth at South and Davies, which we know, you know, we want to keep Fargo North a viable high school, so they can have the full range of offerings that the other high schools do. But then, you see the physical reality of how close South High is, and how far away North High is. So, in your estimation, this is the traditional time in the meeting when I put you on the spot, I do it once a meeting. Feel like that 1C, that 1100 number of students at North High is, is a good and viable number in the foreseeable future? High enough?
Yes, I think what you're going to see is more, you know, you'll have that stable neighborhood then. You know, you'll have that, that attendance area, it's not going to change or flex that much. So once those are set, I think you're going to see some pretty static numbers. It's not going to be as dynamic as you're going to see on the far side. I mean, that's the best I can do with a crystal ball. But I mean, you know, there is just no more development. And unless you have a neighborhood flip, which is some of the thinking behind what's going on at Lincoln and Lewis and Clark right now, and in the Clare Barton area, there's some, you know, younger families moving in, older folks moving out. But those aren't going to be, you know, huge changeovers, but they're going to be enough to keep everything really stable, I think, for quite a while.
I think, my question was, in the past, and especially at the last retreat, when we talked about ensuring that North remains a viable high school for all of its offerings and so forth, is 1100 students critical mass, if it stays roughly 1,000, 1,100?
Yeah, that's, that would be a very stable environment for a high school, 1,000 to 1,100. You know, it's when you get below 1,000, you start getting towards 900, that's when the opportunities, the educational structures start to fall apart. Middle school level, we get Ben Franklin down to 7, 600, the teams start to fall apart, you can't provide the same. And I think that's really important for people to know, too, because Jim had mentioned this before. This isn't about balancing attendance areas, it's about providing equitable educational services, and being able to continue to do that at Ben Franklin and North in particular, while still trying to maintain some assembly of neighborhood schools at the elementary level. I mean, and then, on top of all, of course, dealing with the, the numbers. But I mean, so it's, it's, it's got about three different prongs to it, in my, in my view.
Chris?
Okay, I've been quietly sitting here. I have a question, and I've been asked this by several constituents. And the question is, who cares if North is low in enrollment? And so, if we have Cardinal Mensch coming online, and some growth, because our elementary schools up there are, except for Washington, is slightly low, and Longfellow is low, that elementary schools are relatively full, so we've had an increase there. What if we looked at the midtown area and said, okay, Ed Clap Park was supposed to take some weight off of Lewis and Clark and Kennedy, and send that south, and keep midtown the way it is, and subsidize North? I mean, if there's no teams, you know, academically, how great that they have small class sizes? And so, the answer that I think the board majority believes is, well, we've had a call from the public to be more stringent fiscally, and so, it makes more sense to use what we have. And so, the trajectory of the conversations I had with a couple of people, why don't you just add on to Davies if there's growth? And so, then, my response is, well, we feel, the majority of the board feels that we should use the space we have, before we would add on to another school, or build another school. And so, I guess, is that, is that right? I mean, is that everyone's thinking, the reason we don't just kind of leave things as they are, tweak the boundaries for, for Ed Clap Park School and call it good? Is it because everyone feels there's a need for us to use the space we have, rather than, say, adding on, building elementary schools sooner, and possibly adding on to Discovery and Davies?
Linda, and then, I think Jim, did you have your-
Well, that was why I asked the specific question of Dr. Schatz. You know, when you are relaying the question that you've been asked, you know, who, who cares if, you know, wouldn't that be a good thing, if there's lower enrollment at North and smaller class sizes? And, and are we just trying to fill up the containers with equal, you know, to the same level-
Right.
From a number standpoint? And I think what we're hearing loud and clear educationally is that we do not have equitable educational quality among the high schools if we allow one of the high schools to dip too low in enrollment. And is that correct? Is that what-
That would be my prediction, and that would be correct.
I'm not against efficiencies, but I'm not going to vote for anything, because we're trying to fill up space. And as much as I look at all of these scenarios, I think there are probably two neighborhoods in our community that will fill our boardroom as we get close to this, or fill our mailboxes. And fortunately, I live in one of those. It is all about providing the right opportunities to kids. And when you talk about lower class sizes, and, you know, maybe we just throw the resources at that to take care of that, we don't have the ability in our general fund to operate inefficiently going forward. From a staffing perspective, we just cannot afford that long-term. So while the problem is not there today, and I don't suppose we still have this data from about 18 months ago, but we actually had a push forward of what we're going to see for future-sized high school populations, if the current kids, which we know move 10% per year, in and out, but if the current kids just progress grade level to grade level to grade level. And we actually had North, I think, under 850 students in a short time period. So, while no change is ideal for everybody, from the public standpoint, I feel compelled to get some kind of change to protect the future educational quality for kids that are attending North High and Ben Franklin. My fear has been that we would not move enough, so that the people that were asked to move to provide that population base would then still find themselves in a school building that didn't have enough supporting student numbers to offer the same curriculum. Whether I like either of these two proposals, or any of the stuff we've seen before, is a different, different matter altogether, I think we're at least achieving the critical mass that we're going to need to move forward. And I, I get the same people talking to me about, can't we take a three-year wait and see? And of course, I usually want to ask them, what grade is your child in right now? But that's not always why. And the reality of it is, I think whoever's on this board three years from now is going to be dealing with boundary changes again, probably for different reasons. And it'll be the struggle of where's the next elementary school going to go, and how are we going to re-carve the map at that point in time? So it's not an easy decision, but for me, it isn't solely about efficient use of buildings. It's more about effective delivery of education. That's going to guide my vote at the end of the discussions.
Robin?
Totally agree with everything that Linda and Jim said. A third component to that, with my history on the board philosophically, I'm also opposed to high schools that are too big. So if we continue to add on to Davies, we get in a situation where we were at South, where there were about 500 to 600 students per class. And we know that that really lessens the opportunities for a lot of, a lot of extracurricular programs, hence the reason we're seeing more than double the extracurricular participation due to Davies. So I think that would be a third component. I wouldn't be, philosophically, I'm opposed to getting supersized high schools. And that was, that was a big, that was really the main emphasis, or one of the main emphases on the long-range facility plan one that we had, was to make South smaller.
Chris?
Just a follow-up on- Just to follow up on Jim's point, thank you for your input, but very similar to what I replied to the constituents that I was speaking with. But from a staffing perspective, my question, I guess, is, we're already educating all those kids at North. We're not gonna get more kids, we may get fewer kids. But if it's not efficient, is that because we're hiring more staff in the growing parts of the city? I mean, is that the rationale there? I mean, we're, we're already paying for North, the way it is right now. And so, are we gonna save money if we move more kids up there? No, not really. I, I, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around the whole North thing.
I could tell you, in the elective areas, where you start to see the downside in AP courses, other electives, if, if you're staffing them at, right now, we try not to staff over if, if they're under 15, sometimes it gets to 12. But you start staffing that at five, at six, seven, you're gonna be adding staff. Because, because you're gonna have more, you, you, you wouldn't have the section if it was under 15. So, if you're gonna have the section, you have to have a staff member. So, we currently are staffed without those sections. So, if you add those sections, you're gonna, you're gonna have a higher FTE cost at North.
And how that affects students right now, like my students and North High students that I have, have less opportunity annually for those elective courses and the AP courses because they're only offered every other year, or they have to travel to South to get those, and we all know that students just don't do that. So, my, my kids have gone without a lot of elective courses that aren't available to them, readily available to them as those at South and Davies. So, they, in my opinion, my children have been disadvantaged at North as far as class selection goes, under the current system with where the numbers are right now.
Rusty?
The number that strikes me is just the low attendance at Ben Franklin right now, it's 633. I know the numbers that you've run, Bob, we're adding about 100 students. And I know it's tough to add more, but ideally, it'd be nice to add more into what I believe the largest middle school, where you're not gonna see growth, but you're only gonna see more growth down South and Discovery, and that number continues to grow. And, and I know it's tough to do. I mean, ideally, I'd like to see more students there, but unfortunately, that's our footprint, and Ben Franklin's North, and...
Shall we let Bob sort of flow through to the end of this? Because I think there might be some more concrete recommendations, and then have a little more discussion then, and see. So, go ahead, Bob.
Thank you very much. Just as a reminder, the last time we were together, we looked at an elementary proposal. In your packet on page 17 and 18 is the current elementary map and the current demographic information on 17 and 18. On pages 19 and 20 are the proposals that we shared with you the last time, the elementary proposed number two, where on the map you'll see the colors are the outlines of the new attendance areas, the dashed lines are the existing attendance areas, so that you have some reference point to some of the changes. And then on page 20 is where you see the impact of those changes as students would relocate to some of the different buildings within the system. So, based on all of that information, administration is ready to make a recommendation moving forward. And that would be what's found on page 21. What we would recommend would be the elementary boundaries that we shared last time, that proposed number two. It would be the secondary, both middle school and high school, proposed 1C. And on the maps on page 21, again, the existing boundaries are the dashed lines, so that you have reference to that. The rationale behind these recommendations are found on the next few pages. On page 22, what you'll see is a side-by-side comparison between our current model and the elementary proposed two. I wanted to highlight three areas. This plan would create space and capacity at the three buildings in which we know there is current growth, Bennett, Centennial, and Kennedy. About 200 to 250 at Bennett and Kennedy, and about 100 student potential growth at Centennial Elementary. So, that should accommodate much of the growth pattern on the far south of our community. And then on page 22 and 23, I also provided you a side-by-side comparison with the other information that we've discussed together, so that you had that for your further conversation tonight.
I beg your pardon, sorry, Linda. Just one quick question, and maybe you answered this in an earlier meeting, and I just can't remember. The overage of Clara Barton, would that be a hardship? That they would be five over capacity?
Again, this is the numbers if, if we had moved all petition students back to their home school. And because there are petition students that we have granted, that's not the actual numbers as of today.
So, so that would kind of wash out?
We certainly use that as the factor when we are looking at petitions. Does it help both the sending and the receiving school? So, that's played out in that petition process. Then, on page 24, you'll see the rationale behind the recommendation for the middle school proposed changes, which again, would be that proposed 1C. On the right-hand side, you see the impact it would have on the number of students in that, in the three facilities. Ben Franklin would increase 111, Carl Ben would decrease slightly, 16, Discovery would decrease by about 95 students. And then you see over on the left-hand side of the display, the information as you look at free and reduced, special ed, and ELL. And then finally, the reason or the rationale behind the recommendation for 1C at the high school level, same data is provided for you. On the right-hand side, you see the impact on the number of students in the three high schools. And on the left-hand side, the information as the other demographic information that we've discussed. And then finally, for the last part of your conversation or discussion, I'd like to go back to page 21, because on the bottom of that, we wanted to address how these different scenarios would impact the elementary to secondary feeder system. The map on the left-hand side of the screen would be the elementary boundaries in the colored area. Now, the dashed lines are the secondary boundaries. And over to its right then would be the feeder system for the different elementary schools. You would notice if this recommendation was the one that moved forward, that Clara Barton-Hawthorne, the Ed Clap Elementary, and Jefferson Elementary would have a split to two different middle schools or two different high schools. So, that is the recommendation that we are making at this time.
Before I let you guys all have questions again, I just wanna say thank you very much because clearly, the number of hours that have been spent on this between meetings and just to start us off are exorbitant, not to diminish the importance of this. And certainly, we appreciate the fact that you've answered our questions and taken everything seriously, and come back with the kind of information and recommendations that give us something to, to seriously talk about. And I think it's really important that we all understand this, how this has all evolved. So, having said that, now we can have some more discussion about the recommendations. John?
Madam President, members of the board, I'm curious, Dr. Gross, we, we, we see the demographics, we see the opportunity balancing, we see the, the, the numbers side of all this. And I know we've all heard from folks, yeah, I'm just curious, the, the human element of, of changes. And I, I don't know what it's like when kids and families go through boundary changes, but it's very emotional. I'm, I'm wondering about if, what the trade-offs are of if you give or take 50 to 100 students or whatever, what the trade-offs are in light of like access and walkability, transportation, neighborhoods, you know, I'm just curious, some of those human elements that families face when, when there's, when there's a, a change in, in where their kids go to school, and, and, and at what point this prevails over this? You know, how, how high do we rank something like transportation access, or how high do we rank walkability, or near proximity, proximity to a school versus the desire for balance academically and number and class size and so on?
I can take a stab at that. I think that's why we've done what we've done with the elementaries, is to keep the neighborhood concept in place, and we, and when you look at walkability. But when you go to the middle school, high school, that, that's almost impossible, because no matter how you wanna slice and slice that up, just the sheer geographical area, you're gonna have outliers that just, it's just not gonna be there. So, we've gone under the construct of get the elementary neighborhood school concept in place, keep that whole, and then after that, figure out what you need to do. And that's what we've done. So, I think the elementary one, when you look at it, they're all pretty well-pocketed within their neighborhood school area. So, I hope that answers your question, but I mean, that's, that's what we tried to do.
Could just continue briefly. In your mind, Dr. Schatz, we all know the, and I'm not disagreeing, I'm just curious, we all know the elementary boundaries, it, it was necessary to, to revisit them and bring balance, especially with the shifts in population and with the new school coming onboard. Was it as necessary, or is it as necessary at this moment also in time to, to shift the second, the other boundaries for middle and for high schools?
Well, that is, that is one of your choices. But, I'm trying to be delicate now. One of the things that I have brought to our administrative teams is that we need to be more proactive and not reactive, and that we need to be in a proactive model. I will tell you that if we don't do something now, we will be in a reactive model in three years. And then you'll be situated with, what are we gonna do now? And then all of a sudden, it has to happen now, and there won't be the time and, and the things put into it for planning, giving people an opportunity to prepare and all those things, it'll just have to happen. You'll be, we've seen that happen in West Fargo. You saw it happen with Kennedy. And so, I, it, it's certainly an option, and if given that direction, that's what we'll do. But I, I would be concerned for two, three years down the road, we're gonna be sitting here with a serious issue at Discovery and at Davies. And, you know, we, we could put 1,500 kids in the Davies, but they all won't have lockers, they all won't have, and we won't, we'll be running split shifts for classes, because you won't have enough classrooms to put the kids in.
Yeah. Linda? As all of us here are parents, and you didn't have to go through having kids go here or go there, it's, I mean, it's a cliche, but kids adapt, sometimes much easier than parents do. I'll just say it. And as many of us, our kids went to many different schools, and as things shifted, our kids shifted. And, you know, the good thing is, all our schools are great schools. And so, if, you know, it's painful at first if, if kids are sitting in the next desk with their best friend, but that hardly ever happens through middle school and high school anyway. It's just part of boundary shifting, it's reality. Rusty?
I'll just piggyback on what Linda said, and I just wanted to share a story that my daughter just graduated, but the grade in front of her, they were in four different schools in four years. They went from Discovery to Agassi to South to Davies. Our students are very resilient, and I don't wanna minimize change, change can be tough for some people, but they're very resilient, those kids did very well. And like Linda said, too, it's all about educating the students in our district, and that's what we're looking out for.
Kim?
I, I guess I wanna kinda weigh in on two, one thing that, that was asked, and then I have a kind of a question about process. I believe if we said, well, let's just take the elementary change right now and don't do the secondary changes, first of all, that isn't quite what we'll do anyway, because we're gonna have to do something to determine which Ed Clap students go where, or maybe we wouldn't, maybe we'd still take that stuff on the north side and send that over to CBE and South, and take the rest of it down to Davies. But I can assure you, two to three years from now, well, don't destroy your PowerPoint, because you'll be able to use the exact same ones again. Because I, I don't think we're gonna see a whole lot of growth in student numbers from 32nd Avenue South to the north end of the district. So, I, I, I think the right thing to do is to figure out the best solution long-term for the district and implement it. I'm more curious in terms of the implementation process. Because we're, we're gonna be making a, a decision that certainly will have a human impact on some families. And in particular, all of our number crunching is assuming this year shift happens. But there's gonna be a family out there that's going to have a sophomore at a high school that the following year, they'd have a freshman at that same high school, but now we're gonna tell them, you're gonna have a junior over here, or a sophomore over here, and a freshman over here. Have you thought at all about how could we do a transition plan? And I understand that slows down the number movement to not create a family that has to decide, are we going to the North game tonight, or the Davies game, or, or the South game, I guess it would be? Because we have kids at both schools competing in an event tonight. Have we thought through that at all?
We've certainly had those conversations about the petition process that would have to follow, and that we would look to a family like that as the number one priority, to try to keep families together. Because I think you're absolutely right. We do not want families to have to make those decisions. So, as part of the petition process, even currently, if there is a family member already in a building, we give priority to that family. We would continue that into the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I sort of, just to piggyback on, on that question, in general terms, one of the reasons we're having this conversation right now is because we've always felt we want to give families who may be affected by decisions we make as much notice as possible. Has there been discussion about how, I mean, obviously, people who are interested might be watching us on TV and following this, but for the masses, that's not the case? So, what is the way we would roll out whatever, has that, decisions made, has that discussion taken place?
Well, I think we would have to put a, a more detail to the plan, but we would certainly utilize all of the different resources that we would have available to make this known to families. If that is our online, in electronic newsletters, if that is our website, it's making those announcements with families. And then most likely, having some meetings in some of the buildings that are gonna be directly impacted.
Okay, that, that was one of the questions that I had in the past. John, and then Linda?
I have a motion, Linda, if you'd like to go first, then I'll come back.
I just had a quick question. We're talking fall of 2015, not fall 2014.
Correct, correct. I think...
Talking a year and a little bit of...
Right. And, and the, the hope, I mean, you know, as your president, my hope was that we would be able to make this decision, you know, I, in a way, the school year's over, but by the end of June, so that there could be some notifications starting for families and letters needing to be sent if need be over the summer, so that people would know at the beginning of next school year, if not before, what changes might impact them or their family, and so that they would have the time for. I think that's what we discussed in the past. Okay.
Make one other comment?
Yeah.
And we had also talked about the high school being a roll-in, starting with ninth graders. So, I think that hasn't been said. We would roll it in. So, if you're a junior at one high school, you're not gonna have to move. And we are doing that because of the High School Activities Association rules for participation in fine arts, athletics, all those other things, to make sure we don't have a student who becomes ineligible. So, we, you know, I mean, we're gonna take a look at all those situations and try to do the best we can to help families out. But, and we'll get the detail to that once we know what our boundary areas are.
Madam, Madam President?
Go ahead, John.
I move a first reading approval of the administration's recommendations for proposal number two for elementary, proposal number 1C for middle school, proposal 1C for high school, to be voted on and approved, to be voted on at the second reading...
high school, to be voted on and approved, to be voted on at the second reading, June 24th.
Second.
Moved and seconded and discussion. Rick?
I want to clarify, because I wasn't tracking, John, is-
Mike, please.
Excuse me. I want to clarify, because I was not tracking. Is that administration's current recommendation, what John just proposed?
It is.
I just want, yeah, I wasn't following.
No, it is. And Madam, and Madam President, the reason I'll explain this is I, I think it's imperative for us to give the public a chance to digest this. A first reading tonight with our endorsement of the recommendations presented by administration puts us all on the same page, and yet it notices the public that this is impending. Your public hearing is coming. It will be June 24th. Please let us all know at that meeting or before, in between, you know, what your thoughts are, if you have any concerns.
Other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the recommendations as presented here by the administration as a first reading acceptance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Oh, okay. So we better have a roll call, please.
Boyd?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Wait, no, no.
No?
Okay.
She said same sign.
Well, I say that when, when we do a unified, but when we're doing it each by themselves, I think we better say yes or no. Go ahead.
Nelson?
Yes.
Popacek?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Wallman?
No.
Goldenberg?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Keep in mind, of course, this is just a first reading, and there could be tweaks that are made next time. Is there anyone that has any questions of any nature that were not answered tonight that need information for next week? Linda?
I just have a question of John. I mean, typically, we don't do, I mean, these aren't city ordinances that require first reading, second reading. Are you just saying we're kind of putting our stamp on it, and we'll have the final vote next week? Or do you mean, like, literally first reading, second reading, that if there's changes, then it has to come back again?
Madam President, in my mind, until the next meeting is over, it's not over. But we have, at this point in time, given a majority approval of the recommendations by the administration. And yet, it also calls for essentially what I would call a public hearing, where the public has notice and can weigh in on that. Certainly, even between first and second readings, things can change or get amended or modified. So, and we don't have a charter that calls for first readings, per se, but we have, in the past, had some instances of first readings somewhat for the same purpose of public notice. But as I interpret it right now, a majority of our board has given a tentative approval of this recommendation pending public feedback and a final vote on June 24th.
Mike, can I just follow up? I guess my question was, are we envisioning that even if there are some minor tweaks, we can make a final decision next meeting?
Robin?
Mine's more of a process question. We had a little bit of discussion at governance about the benefits of having a first and second reading or not. What would be the alternative, not that I want to undo what we just did, but what would be the alternative way to proceed besides having a first and second reading?
Rick, Jim?
I think we could have passed this. We could pass it at the June 24th meeting. And we may discover, quite frankly, that a lot of the public doesn't even find out about it till we start informing them next fall, at which time we, whoever's on the board then, could revisit it again. So it's like any decision, you know, it's, we'll make it whenever it gets made, and it'll get modified whenever it gets modified.
Rick?
The other option would have been to table the motion for further discussion at the next meeting. That would have been another option, similar to, this way at least pushes it forward, gives the administration some idea where the majority of the board is at.
So I want to ask again, is there anyone who has concerns of some sort that, you know, caused you not to vote in favor of this, that is information you need for next time, that could help you or address something for the rest of the board that we should know or ask to know? Jim?
I'm not against making a change. I would have voted A, I guess, because that's the way you keep asking us to, to two C, as opposed to no to one C, mostly because the impact this is going to have in the Jefferson neighborhood and in the Clare Barton Hawthorne neighborhood by splitting those elementaries. But again, I understand that's also going to happen out in Ed Clapp. So it's not that I'm against this change, I just prefer the two C model.
Okay. Chris?
Similar to Jim's comments, I, just, everyone knows, I'll disclose, I have children, we have children that go to Clare Barton Hawthorne. I'm okay either way. I, my question is, and this goes back to many retreats ago, are we doing enough to incentivize enrollment at North? Are we letting people know what great stuff is available up there, so that parents, if they choose to, can drive their kids? Or provide busing, frankly. I mean, if we're already going to bus kids from Clare Barton, Hawthorne, and Jefferson to North, what if we allowed families' transportation? What if we said, okay, here's your pickup spot? It doesn't have to be house to house. We can say, hey, bring all your Jefferson kids that want to go to North here, or bring all your Clare Barton kids that want to go to North here, and we'll bus them for you. Then it's voluntary. And then how about the new STEM Center at NDSU, some great collaboration between North High and the new STEM Center, that's only available there. And then, I'm thinking about distance learning. If kids are having to travel all over, we have amazing technology in this district. What if we provide distance learning or online classes for those courses that aren't available, so that we're not diminishing the opportunities for kids at North before we overturn the apple cart? And I think a lot about Jefferson. We had this amazing presentation from the staff at Jefferson about their Bruin pride. And that just kills me, because those kids really love that they're Bruins. And, I mean, those are hardships that I take really seriously. Clare Barton Hawthorne, most of the families that I've talked to, they're fine going to Franklin and North. It's not a big deal. But I just, I don't feel confident we've exhausted the possibilities with that. So that's just where I'm at. But I know that the administration has put blood, sweat, and tears into this, and I really, really value that tremendously. And I understand looking forward and planning and not being reactive. So it's hard to balance all those things, but just not 100% there with North.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much. That was excellent conversation. So we just have a few other items on our agenda. Committee and liaison reports. Robin?
There was not a need for communications to meet this month, and so we canceled our meeting. I have nothing to report.
Linda? Chris?
Aside from, nobody's going to talk about handing out diplomas. Love that. I did South this year, had a bunch of great kids that I recognized, so. But I have to tell you, South was the only one where they videotaped the school board members handing out the diplomas at North. And Davies, they videotaped the principal shaking the hands of the kids, which I thought was much more appropriate, because I don't need to see myself handing out hundred diplomas, thank you. Neither does anyone else. But it was really just a terrific ceremony, and a lot of great speeches. Our kids are amazing. They just are. So that's it.
Rick?
I'm not sure we've actually scheduled our next planning meeting. We may not, we'll have one before the next board, the last board meeting, I'm sure, so.
Okay. Rusty?
I did hand out diplomas at Davies, handed out my daughter's diploma. And hopefully, we didn't send, set a precedent that she had to take a selfie of us, so. She just told me that before the ceremony. I'm going, well, all right. I'll apologize.
John? Jim? Okay. President's report, I'm afraid you have no printed documents today. The dates, nothing's changed. The only thing I've done to is Woodrow and Davies graduation, which I really think are fun, especially when you know a lot of the kids. And if you're a continuing board member and you've never been or never had the opportunity to hand out the diplomas at Woodrow, I encourage you to, at the very least, attend, because it's a very different kind of graduation, and it's very, very special. So just keep that in mind for future. Even if you're not going to be on the board, go to the Woodrow graduation sometime if you've not had an opportunity. Are there any things important that I'm missing with my dates that I have to remind people about?
Nothing new from the last meeting?
Yes.
Picnic.
Oh, well, that's not, nothing new. But you can have your other report now, Jim. Go ahead.
The State School Board Association Board met over the weekend, and on Monday, did a number of things. Changed a couple of personnel policies for our employees, finalized the budget, finalized, well, I shouldn't say finalized, talked a lot about how the convention's going to work since this year, it's going to just be Thursday, Friday. So no staying over Friday night for Saturday functions. Had a presentation from the superintendent of Public Instruction and the director from whatever Minot's areas, REA is referred to. And they are launching, through the DPI budget, a board development process to try and help boards get up to speed on a number of subjects that I think we'll probably see unleashed sometime early this fall. A voluntary thing for boards to take advantage of. Then we spent about an hour and a half with Senator Cook and Representative Nathie, talking a little bit about what they're doing in their worlds of interim committees. They believe that unless there's another special election held between now and the end of the legislative session, there will never be a special election in North Dakota again. I think this is an offshoot, not due to us, but due to the fact that a number of school districts and special elections were able to get building projects and bonds passed. So they're going to try and force all future elections to happen either at the June primary or the November general election, which means, of course, nothing bad can happen in the off-years, because you won't be able to hold any kind of an election. They also are pretty sure front and center is going to be a discussion on fund balances. One of the things I told them that they needed to get information on, isn't DPI's report of the ending fund balance. What you need to make sure you understand before you set an arbitrary threshold is the low point in the year of the fund balance. And to that end, Brock, I think you'll be getting a request from the State School Board Association. I'm guessing it would be in December or January, that was our lowest point in our fund balance. But they're going to try and get it from all 181 districts. So we have some data that will hopefully, if they're going to do this, at least make sure they set it in a manner that doesn't force districts to borrow money in the future, because our fund balance would be exhausted before we get the property tax dollars coming in in February. Interestingly, Cook brought up the financial services tax. And so he must be getting a lot of pushback, maybe out of rugby or whoever. Yeah, so that may come back. I don't really see them reallocating it back the way it was before, but maybe they'll take some kind of thing. The really good news I heard out of them is they are pretty convinced that there'll be a significant increase in the school construction loan allocation dollars, because they recognize that there was a lot more demand than they had dollars for. They also, although they're not certain what will surface, think there'll be an equal demand for a huge amount of money if, in fact, they tackle the TFFR-PERS dilemma and choose to go a different direction and have to fully fund their liability there. So as he put it, we can put 400 million into school construction, or we can fix the pension plans for 400 million, but we really can't do both. I explained to him he could, because the school construction funds are a loan, and when they come back, they can fund it into the plan, and they don't have to make the plan 100% liability-free day one of freezing it. So he kind of looked at me and afterwards said, could I call you about that later? And I said, feel free to. But, so it was overall, I think, a couple of good days out there.
Thank you, Robin.
And, and I don't know if anybody's turned in the stuff you've been collecting yet, which is fine. I mean, you can, you can just bring it to the picnic yourselves. But for those of you that may not be serving, you know, on the board at that point in time, if it's easier, just call me and I'll run by your house and pick up the stuff.
And we know that Jim is going to accost whoever the new board members are as well the minute they get on the board. Robin, you had a question?
Clarifying question on the fund balances, and I don't mean this to be facetious. Did they, did they mention that they were only going to look at the school district fund balance, or were they also going to look at the states?
Not-
And the cities?
They're not looking at the states, they're going to be looking at every subdivision of government. And the number that scared me is they just really are having a hard time getting their hands around the fact that it would ever be more than like 10%. And I think at a 10% fund balance, we'll end up borrowing money. If they're using the ending June fund balance as that number, as opposed to the mean average over the course of the year.
John, did you have your-
I do. The other committee report, I, I just feel so bad with these technologies, you know, today. It's like, Rob and I get to Facebook her happy birthday messages. Dr. Schatz, I couldn't get ahold of him, and I got his cellphone, and I really wished I would have sung him a happy birthday, so it'd be a keeper. Well, I texted you one too. And, and so yours was Sunday, and Chris's is Friday the 13th, so happy birthday. Chris Waldman to you.
Oh, Friday the 13th is lucky. My son was born on Friday the 13th, so it's a good thing. Next board meeting, June 24th, just want to remind you that the new board members will be invited for an orientation prior to that meeting, that, and will be invited to dinner and to the board meeting. So hopefully, we'll get to meet whoever those folks are. Debriefing. Anyone? Well, in that case, I'd like to wish good luck to all those who are on a ballot this evening, and hopefully by 10 o'clock tonight, we might have some good news, both in Fargo and in Castleton. So all the best, and meeting adjourned.